Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three workshop of the Village Board. We apologize for our late start. The hosting company for our website, the website is having difficulties. So if you've been trying to get in via the Village website, you will have had difficulties. So apologize. There are, there is an in-person quorum for the Village Board. I am joining remotely. And we are joined also by our Village Attorney. Tonight is actually not a workshop. It's our monthly meeting. So we're going to do the monthly meeting first. So Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
Your colleague.
Here.
Trustee Woods.
Here.
Trustee Bozey.
Here.
Trustee Thaddeus absent, and Trustee Starbuck.
Here.
Thank you. First opportunity to request to vote, a vote to add or modify agenda items. I believe Clerk that we need to table item ten B one and two, because we have not had recommendation from the Planning Board yet. Is that correct?
Yeah, you don't need to vote to table those. When we get to those, you could just table them to. We're not adding really or modifying.
Okay, as long as we're on the topic, I'll make a motion to table those items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, a couple of quick announcements. The sidewalk on Maple Terrace is under construction. The the deeply failed sidewalk was demolished today. Excavation is beginning. Will take about a week. I have had conversation with all of the residents on that street, but just so that everyone else knows it may be difficult to pass that very narrow street for the next week while the work is done. And it'll take a period of time for the sidewalk to cure. It's the same team that did the work on Paulding, so we expect them to be efficient and effective in their work. Also, our roadways and facilities crew is preparing the subway for repainting. We're going to talk about that later this evening, but wanted to let folks know that we're going to have to close the subway down overnight on Thursday into Friday to let the railings, let the railings dry and the walls where folks might bump get dry. That's correct, right, Eliza? Thursday into Friday?
That's right.
Okay, so you'll see the subway taped off, etc. Any other announcements from other board members or from the clerk?
Nope.
Okay. So, moving on to item five, do we have someone with us from Jewel this evening, Jeff?
Yes, Peggy Kurtz.
Hi Peggy, I can't see you. Oh, here we go. Now we'll see you.
You tell me where to stand.
You can stand right there and the camera will come to you.
So can you introduce yourself and let the public know what's up this evening with an Echo Action Award?
Okay. Good evening. So my name is Peggy Kurtz. I'm a community coordinator for Jewel Community Power. Jewel is the program administrator for the Hudson Valley Community Power Program that the Village of Cold Spring is participating in. And I'm here this evening to present an award, present Cold Spring with an Echo Action Award from the Community Choice Administrators of New York. CPA NY is dedicated to helping municipalities across the state achieve climate and climate justice objectives in support of New York's Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. The board recognizes communities and organizations that are actively accelerating the clean energy transition through CCA, this Hudson Valley Community Power Program, it's CCA program, and through other climate action. New York State's recently finalized Climate Action Plan mandates an unprecedented transition to renewable energy. The electric grid must be powered seventy percent by renewable energy by 2030. At this point, that's six and a half years away. Seventy percent by renewable energy and a hundred percent by carbon-free by 2040. What I want to emphasize is the state cannot meet these very ambitious climate goals, which will ultimately help to protect our own communities without local leadership. This program helps communities take a major step in the direction of meeting those goals. Participation in a community choice aggregation program with renewable energy, and I know that the village has chosen a hundred percent renewable energy as the default. CCA programs with renewable energy are recognized by state climate programs as one of the most powerful climate actions the community can take. CCA programs enable communities to go from about one to five percent of households running on renewable, their electricity and renewable energy in the community to about eighty percent. So that's quite a change, but at the same time providing consumers with strong consumer protection. You and other communities like you participating in CCAs are actually on track to make up around forty percent of the competitive renewable energy market in New York State this year, forty percent. You are part of a larger movement that is truly making a difference in helping New York State meet its climate goals. These awards are a way to recognize genuine political leadership that's needed to establish a program like this. The Hudson Valley Community Power Program was the first clean energy, uh, community choice aggregation program in the Hudson Valley. Altogether, the previous round of the program, the program enabled more than twenty-three thousand households in the Hudson Valley to switch to renewable energy, while also supporting the development of renewable energy market in general in New York State. Previous round of program, eight hundred seventeen Cold Spring participants, that is households or small businesses, saved two hundred sixteen thousand dollars over the course of one year, while also, that's just one year, while also avoiding seven hundred thirty-six metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent emissions. In addition to participating in CCA with renewable energy, Cold Spring is also designated clean energy community and a tree sitting. The village is installing electric vehicle charging stations, is working on a waterfront resiliency plan, has completed benchmarking of municipal buildings. And also has installed waterfront lighting that is designed to be low impact in terms of light pollution. I'm very glad that I'm here today to take a few minutes to honor your leadership, and I don't know if you want to somebody standard presented and maybe somebody else to take picture. Thanks so much. Okay, so I just want to congratulate.
Well, we'll try just to turn it back.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry that I'm not there in the room. Hats off to trustee Bozey who's really led the charge on many of the initiatives that have just been described. Laura has really brought us forward very quickly on that. So before we go into reports from village departments, I just want to open with thanks to our staff. We have had a rough couple of weeks of illness and travel and managing a number of very high-pressure projects, and our staff have performed with grace and professionalism. They are pouring themselves into their service. I am grateful. The trustees are grateful. I want to also acknowledge, you know, this iteration of the Village Board sort of came out came out roaring, wanting to get a lot done, wanting to get sitting projects finished and take on new initiatives, and we have done that, and we have gone hard for a year and a half. We've met just about every week, and we recognize that our enthusiasm to do good work gets carried out by the staff who show up day after day and see what we think about and propose through to fruition. So I'm grateful to all of them, and I'm really proud of the things that we're doing together. So with that, do we have a report from the village accountant? None this evening?
No.
Michelle has been busy with Ann and with Jeff collecting taxes. We are in that period. Yet another reason that the recent weeks are stressful. There's a lot of activity at Village Hall. I don't see Bugsy. Do we have roadways and facilities with us?
No.
Okay, well, I'm just going to go through his, all of these reports are available online. I encourage you, if you're a details person, I encourage you to read them, but I will just say in summary that the roadways and facilities crew is kicking butt out there on the street, doing a ton of maintenance work and dealing with deferred issues. We have also working with Bugsy bid out a number of sidewalk jobs. I talked to you about Maple Terrace earlier, and having some of that big construction work off the table allows real time for Bugsy to get down into, and his team to get down into maintenance on streaks and streets and sidewalks, preparing for sign installation related to parking, etc. And he's also been very active over the last month, strengthening our relationships with the county roadways and facilities team, forging relationships to borrow equipment and to share services. So I'm really proud of that team. We are up to our full speed, our full capacity of summer team, and welcome to the, welcome to the folks who are with us for a period of time and keep up the good work. Do we have Matt for water and wastewater?
Yeah, we do have.
Okay, a couple of things on water and-
People have tried to join through the website.
Right, okay. And again, I apologize, the server, the host for our website is having technical difficulties. I'm sorry for anyone had a hard time getting in. I did too. Just a couple of quick notes from water and wastewater. Our bacteria lab tests, all routine sampling is found in good standing. The seasonal disinfection, chlorination has begun for the summer. Water is treated differently. The raw water is treated differently in the summer than it is in the winter because of presence of different bacteria, etc., that we need to worry about. So that has begun. The aqueduct reconnection continues. We are now waiting for the insertion of the isolation valve, so we can keep that moving. So all good stuff happening there. Anything from code enforcement, Jeff?
I did not prepare a report, so Bob, but if you can get with Susan or Tyra and ask them to invoice us or enforcement services.
Since when? How long ago?
It's at least six months. Yeah, we need to get on a regular schedule.
Sure. What do you want, quarterly, monthly?
Whatever works for you, but they can generate instead of us asking to give you money. That would be nice.
Thank you. The clerk is exchanging with deputy supervisor, town deputy supervisor Bob Flaherty. Police Department Larry is not able to join us tonight. He wanted me to make a couple of notes on his report. There were three arrests in May, and he wanted to make clear what those were. Two were related to a single incident in a restaurant. Parties known to each other had a disagreement. There was an assault in a restaurant, and the other was a mental health, a custody related to a mental health issue. The gunshots fired on the report this month is the incident with fireworks at Haldane School. There was not another discharge of weapons that relates to the report of gunshot, the sound of gunshots that turned out to be fireworks near Haldane. Justice Court, fifteen defendants carried eighteen charges, fees of just about sixty-four hundred dollars over the last month. Do we have the fire company as the chief in the room?
Jeff is here, and he did submit his report way earlier than expected, and I missed it, so.
Whoa, okay, talk us through it, Jeff. Good evening.
Well, there's not much. Thirteen calls last month. It's kind of slow for us. The first mountain rest of the year, but it was easy ones. So Evan and his parks staff handled it, and we went back to service. Thank you for him. And it's that time of year. Everybody's grilling. Try to keep your grill clean, and please don't put it right up against your house. That's all I got.
Thanks so much. We hit Justice Court already. Standing boards and committees. I don't, I think we also are missing some folks probably because of technical difficulties. Historic District Review Board has giant news this month. They adopted their new design standards for the Historic District. This is a project that was funded with a grant from New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. It had not been done since nineteen ninety-nine. It was a desperately needed update that brings into consideration I'm sorry, there's a fruit fly getting around me. Composite materials, other man-made materials, and how they might be appropriately applied within the district. Very much clearer guidelines on the kinds of form-based questions we've been talking about as part of zoning. It's a fantastic document. Jeff, is it up on the Village website yet?
Not yet. It's on my list.
It will be soon. It's a beautiful document. It is so very user-friendly, and we look forward to many successful reviews based on it. So congratulations, HDRB. And they get the month of July off because they overlap with the Fourth of July. No meeting in the last month for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Several members are working hard on the code update. I don't think we have a report from the Planning Board. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. The Tree Advisory Board, Jen is not able to join, but she there are a few things to note from her report. There's some important pruning to happen very shortly for trees in McConville Park over the top park. We are aware of them, and they are being addressed. Jen has been very helpful working with, I think I see Bugsy now, working with the roadways and facilities crew chief to identify sidewalk and tree root conflict mitigation. We need to come back. We need to come back to that work and sort of prioritize, but the process has started, and I feel great about that. There are eight new street trees that were planted this spring. They're doing really well despite the dry May and June. There are watering bags on all of them. I will say Jen is desperately needs help watering. The new trees near the nest can be watered by hose, but all of the other new trees along Main and other locations require water brought via truck to be loaded into the watering bags. And right now, it's Jen and her minivan. So if there are folks who love trees and are interested in giving time once a week to help deliver water to our new trees so that they grow and prosper, please let the village clerk know, and he'll connect you to Jen from the Tree Advisory Board. Rec Commission, I think we have Chair Amato on. Hi, and also, hi, the event coordinator is with us as well, Lillian Mosher.
Yeah, so a couple of things to point out from our report. Thanks to the roadways and facilities for helping to adjust the heights of the basketball court after the the blacktop was redone. We had to adjust the heights higher to be able to do that and install padding around the backboard. There was, padding was coming off. So thanks to the roadways and facilities crew for helping with that. We also have some leagues planned or leagues and events planned for residents. Volleyball, potentially some basketball, softball, soccer leagues, as well as activities like cornhole, just to try and get community members into the parks, using them more. So look out for some announcements for those to come. And then we're also working with the Friends of Phillips Town to kind of coordinate our efforts and fundraise for some improvements to our parks. So we've been meeting with them, and they actually have a meeting tonight as well, excuse me, tomorrow night during our meeting, but we are coordinating with them pretty regularly and also working again with the the Boy Scouts on another project, a potential project down at the waterfront. So that's kind of our hopefully another great project with them. So that's all I have.
Is it another Eagle Scout project?
It is, yeah. It's supposedly going to be a potentially chessboard slash table, picnic table type thing. So that's the plan right now. So we'll see how that goes.
Oh, great. And with the Friends of Phillips Town Rec, does it seem as if there might be a possibility for us to work with them as an umbrella? Five oh one C three?
Yes, that's the plan. They're in favor of it. So as long as it's okay with the village, they're okay with having it. We even could have separations where things are going to be earmarked for certain events or projects within the village.
Did someone in the room sounded like one of the trustees started to say something? No. Well, this is something, the village attorney is on, John first. This is something that we'll need to pull him in on. The idea here is, you know, we had been thinking about a friend to make it easier to fundraise for public spaces and events to form a five oh one C three, sort of a Friends of Cold Spring Public Spaces, but there may be some efficiencies in working with the already established five oh one C three that is the Friends of Phillips Town Rec. So we need to look at what we need to do legally for that and work out systems. If we can cooperate in that way, it would be great. And I thank you for doing that initial check-in, Jeff.
Yeah, absolutely. And thanks to John Mason, who's been great with coordinating and very welcoming.
Jeff, can you, do you have a copy of the, their five oh one C three document, whatever the-
I can get it, yeah. Originally, actually Kathleen put me in touch with John because they had just went through their reincorporation issues. I guess they had worked with a local attorney who helped them to get everything legally squared away. So I can get that from them and send it on to everyone.
And also, when do you anticipate programming, the sports programming to start? Is that like a sort of July, August type of?
Yeah, potentially even sooner. We have, we're going to work with some community members that are also interested. And so they want to start volleyball as soon as possible. So weather permitting, this weekend potentially down at Mayor's Park, and they already have the nets needed and are going to set them up and take them down every day. And then, so it's just a matter of kind of coordination with making sure that there's not other events happening at the same time, and and then some of the other events, we're going to have committee members participating and kind of coordinating or running these. We're planning on having yoga in the park. So having yoga down at Mayor's Park, maybe under the trees by the pavilion. So we have a yoga instructor on our committee, so that's great. And so Leslie has offered to instruct that. So yeah, so we're going to try and get this rolled out as soon as possible and get people you know, using our great parks.
Fantastic.
That's great. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you so much. While we have Lillian, the Boy Scout event went well last weekend?
Yep, no problems whatsoever. Dave Marzola was great. They cleaned up. Everything was opened up on time, closed on time. No problems whatsoever.
Well done. Thank you. Well, I see that the crew chief for roadways and facilities has joined, as has the department head for water and wastewater, Matt. You missed us singing your praises. I'm sorry you had a hard time getting on. I had a hard time getting on tonight, too. Is there anything that you would like to draw out specifically from your reports now that you've made it?
Uh, no, I think if, yeah, sorry, we missed everything coming in. But yeah, no, if you've already brushed over, yeah, I did have a little bit of issues coming in, but yeah, no, the reservoirs are a little bit lower than they were at this time last year, but we are doing everything to keep everything in good spirits and keeping on with the hoping of rain vents. But yeah, everything has been moving forward as Gordon's plan.
Okay, and you'll keep in contact with us about water levels. We did get rain today.
Yep, and I actually spoke to Paul from Han about everything going on with the connection with the meter pit work that was done today. Still waiting on the insertion valve, but yeah, I told him where we were at reservoir levels, but yeah, they're looking, everything's looking promising for getting connected relatively soon.
That's great. The water pit went in, I mean, the meter pit went in today?
Yes, they were working on it today. They just had to do a little bit of piping work, but they should be back on site tomorrow.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Have a good night.
You too.
Bugs, can I add anything? We were just saying that you're just rocking it with your crew.
Well, thank you for that. Yeah, I did have trouble getting in. The two things we got going right now, I mean, we had to help out Matt today. We had to get that sealed up before the rains came, which we did. It's nice working with other departments. We're working on subway and going to be starting to paint crosswalks and setbacks probably in the next day or two, and then the following week. Other than that, we're just moving along on that stuff, and we're going to pick up a few sidewalks in the coming weeks to replace those as well. And that's about all we got on our plate right now. That's taking precedent.
Quite a lot. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any questions for Bugsy or Matt before they head out? You're welcome, like gentlemen.
Bugsy, there is one, I got one communication from the Chamber of Commerce this week. The visitor center had difficulties with the toilets flushing over the weekend. So if somebody from your team can check it out, that would be really helpful.
A problem with flushing as not enough water to force down what needs to be flushed?
I'm not sure exactly. I just know the volunteers had to get the plunger out.
Okay, so it's a good possibility there. Those toilets are adjustable, so I can up the amount of gallons. I'll just bring it up like a half gallon and see how it works, and we'll play it by ear and go from there. But yeah, we can take care of that.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
May we also say thank you to the Chamber of Commerce volunteers for plunging toilets on the weekend? Okay, moving on to updates and news from our municipal and government partners, Town of Phillips Town Deputy Supervisor, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor Fall, I hope you're feeling better. I miss you at the Chamber of Commerce.
I know. I'm sorry I missed it, too.
I had an extra croissant for you, though, so I'll come with you. And New Highway Garage, as you drive by there now, you can actually see the building. Got rid of that trailer. It's been there for over thirty-five years. So now the site looks a lot nicer without that trailer being there. So next steps are, we're still working on the punches, which was quite extensive, but we're getting there and probably hoping to pave the drive, to pave the parking lot before winter comes. Joel Community Power Coordinator Peggy Schultz announced the Echo Action Award for the Town of Phillips Town. Did you get one, too? I just saw her leave when I was coming. Congrats on this.
You got the other one.
Our climate coordinator Martha Upton gave us an update on the EV chargers slated for Mayor's Park. Hopefully that's in progress. Hopefully going to service pretty soon, hopefully. And unfortunately, the EV charger that we put in our town hall, which was pay-as-you-go, isn't working out very well, unfortunately. The first month or so, we started collecting money, but ever since then, it's been almost, the honor system isn't working, put it that way. So we're going to eventually at some point in time put chargers like you're getting in that pay, paid for. And then we just got to figure out what we're going to do. Put these non-payable EV chargers, maybe put them in town garage or something like that, but we'll figure something out. We passed a zero-dollar change order for CB train for the highway garage, garrison landing, as you've been reporting for quite some time. We've had some water issues down for quite some time. But we did frack one of the existing wells, and we were getting, now we're up to over five gallons a minute now, and that should be in production, hopefully by tomorrow, is what I've been told. As you know, we've been buying water for many, many months, and hope this is going to help us put a dent in buying so much water these last several years. So that's going to help us. Passed resolution of the e-waste. Just so you know, we had the e-waste pilot program that ran for almost seven months for free. At the end of May, June, July, we had our company come and pick it up. They picked up two twenty four foot box trucks full of e-waste at, you know, at no expense to our community. I mean, we paid it, but now we're putting a fee schedule in place. So if anyone has e-waste, the plan now is you have to go to the town hall, tell them what you have, get a voucher, get that voucher, and bring it up to our recycling center on Saturday mornings between nine and three, the e-waste. But like I said, that garage was full. Like I said, that was two big truckloads taken out of there. So which is good. Rather, you had taken it out of there to be on the side of the road someplace. But I think people were saving up for quite a while. So hopefully, we won't have as much as we had in the past. But bootstrapping is still coming along really, really nicely. We had a free compost give back during the month of June on Earth Day. We got six, eight yards of compost, and anyone who wanted to take some was more than willing to. It's all the one. So we're looking forward to that, doing that each year possibly. So I will also check on the code enforcement to get a monthly invoice from you. I'll check on that tomorrow. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Laura, while we have the deputy supervisor in the room, what is the the status with the EV charger for Mayor's Park? We had, we paused for a moment while we were waiting to hear from engineers about culvert work. That's going to be a longer term solution. And it seems as if we want to get the charger in before. So we're not, we're not extending the the time until we have a charger in place.
Yeah, I was going to give an update during mine. So glad to do it now. There's been, as you know, kind of a braiding of funding between the town and the village to create this charger at Mayor's Park. So the town gets the Nacerda grant, and then Cold Spring gets the the Central Hudson grant for the installation, then we're sharing costs and revenue. The, so Cold Spring needs to hire the electrician. The the step that we needed to take was to get bids for the electrician. So I have another bid from an electrician that just came in this afternoon. So my hope, I'm working with Michelle on this, but my hope is to be able to bring the proposals to the board to vote, as long as Michelle says that what we have is okay, bring it to a vote next week. And then we'd be able to to yeah, move forward with the installation because the, you know, the town have the highway garage, the EV chargers. So they're waiting there. So and I think at that point, Kathleen, I'll also circle back to Han and just confirm the location. Make sure that they don't have any issues with the culverts. I have to say, they sent the schematic and it was a little more engineering design than I was looking forward to understand placement. So I'll coordinate with them. But I think we're finally, I think everything's in place, so we'll be able to install it. Purple Electric did ours. I don't think it. So they're one of the bits, but we needed, as you know, I mean, this whole process, we needed to fit it out. Yeah, and I, I mean, Martha has been incredibly patient and has great perseverance to get this project through. Really helpful.
Great. Thank you very much for the update. There is no report from the legislator this evening. Reports from members of the Board of Trustees. Laura, do you want to continue if anything with anything else you might have after starting off?
The other one that is still kind of in process, trying to get another bid is so that we can install the LED lighting at Water and Waste Water. So that's using our funding that we already have from the Clean Energy Communities grant. We also actually, we also finished up this steam heating and cooling campaign. We were kind of asking around about if anyone who would install heat pumps. So we reached our goal of buy submitted the paperwork. So we're hopeful that this means that we'll get a $10,000 grant from Nacerda. That would be $15,000 total. But I think I think we could spend it all on LED lighting at Water and Waste Water and, you know, hopefully bring down the electricity cost there. Nacerda also just announced new funding through this Clean Energy Community. So Michelle and I are looking at that, and hopefully we can find more more of these opportunities to get grants for projects like this in the village. So stay tuned on that.
Thanks. Laura, I'm sorry, Eliza or Tweeps?
Well, I was going to leave the State Assembly things for you, Kathleen. Did you want to report on those, or shall I?
Sure.
Um, so this week, the State Assembly and the Senate passed bills enabling legislation that will allow us to expand our parking plan. Right now, we're working on implementing it. And we will be doing code updates shortly, hopefully next month for parking. But for the moment, we're working on, you know, getting all the pieces together. And the State Assembly has passed something that will allow us to phase larger areas of the village resident parking into our parking plan in the future, if you need to. That was the big, and then the rest of my things are next on the topic.
Okay. It's important to add a couple of things there. We had our bills were introduced in the spring. They were carried by Senator Rob Rollison and Assemblyman or Member Dana Levinberg. They worked incredibly cooperatively with us and and brought it to the floor in the very last, got it on the floor at the Assembly at the very last session. It passed Senate pretty quickly. It was in the very last session of the Assembly. So hats off to Dana and to Rob for that cooperative effort with us. I will say, too, that there was advocacy that I think we have to, we should acknowledge and say thank you for from New York State Parks and from the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail in support of measures to enable the village to manage its own resident parking. They provided advocacy for our bills to go forward, and I'm grateful for it. Um, okay, Tweeps, anything from you? You've been working with REC, working on?
Yes, I'm working with REC and working on the code for REC. Also, I just told you. Oh, yes, the handbook. Yes, which is also next on the agenda. But that is Belgian plays will be happy to know that we are looking at the handbook and looking to update it and make it usable and manageable for for the employees and for us. So that's my only update.
Okay. Go ahead, Laura.
Just so the that or Water and Waste Water achieved that the reservoir levels are a little bit low. So a reminder of what happened last summer with that so we have a revised section of the water code, both to address our drought plan and water restrictions. And then I know the clerk has a some some changes to the structure. So just to flag it to say, once we're through, it's kind of ready to go, but we need to, we need to slot it in in terms of meetings or both the for down first review and then to have it scheduled for a a public hearing. But my hope is that we could have it adopted before it is needed. Hopefully, we won't need it. But in case we do, we would have more tools to manage our water quantities.
Thank you.
And I received, and thank you for, you had provided some feedback with all incorporated.
I have I have a couple of updates to give that I feel really good about. I contacted our Phillips Town representative on the board of, I'm sorry, our Putnam County representative on the MTA Board, Neil Zuckerman, and asked him to help arrange a meeting with their government relations folks. So I had a Zoom on the seventh with government relation staff and legal staff from MTA. Thank you very much, Neil. I will say that the, we discussed the proposed connection of Dockside to Little Stony Point along the rail tracks. That was the focus of our conversation. And I am pleased to hear that the MTA is holding fast on its minimum requirements, and that is ten feet. Construction must be more than twenty five feet from the tracks. And there must be at minimum eight foot safety fences. There are issues that, sorry, each of those create in terms of impact, visual impact, et cetera. But I think that the the reality here is that the MTA holding those safety standards creates breathing room for us to, as a community, talk about what the potential, if 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 there were money available to meet those very high bars, what that would mean for our community. So thank you to the MTA for holding to minimums, and we look forward to continuing conversations with the community. I also had a session with the New York Metropolitan Transportation Council. Putnam County is a member, connected to them through the Planning Department. This is a really great opportunity for us. This council runs community workshops on traffic and pedestrian concerns in villages helps helps, well, not just villages, in municipalities, helps those municipalities structure public conversations around needs and priorities and identify most pressing concerns and projects, and then connect to state and federal dollars to make those projects come to fruition. They are very eager to work with Cold Spring. It is a, it is a state service provided through the county membership. So it is no cost to the village. This is yet another way for us to be building out our own data set about traffic needs and and potential responses to traffic needs. So I'm, I am very hopeful about that, and I'm hoping that they will be making a presentation to the board in August, wrapping up a couple of big other projects. It's also done in cooperation with the the Planning Department at Rutgers University. That's actually the the arm that runs the the sessions. And we also had another bit of satisfactory and successful enabling legislation passed by the Senate and the Assembly, and that's related to enabling legislation to allow us to advertise and hire a deputy clerk who may not live in the village. We wanted very much to open the the possibilities for us to attract qualified candidates who might be outside of the village. They, the state, the Senate and the Assembly made a slight revision in our request. We are limited to adjoining counties, but still that opens a lot of possibilities for us for attracting deputy clerk. It's time for that position to move forward. And lastly, on the twentieth, legislator Montgomery has called an update meeting with the town, the villages, and the county's IT department to understand what's new in the world of communication towers. So we'll have more information soon on that. That is everything from me. And then we'll move into board business. C-streak is back with us, back to us again with a proposal, and I'm going to turn it over to Eliza. She's been the lead communicator on this proposal.
So C-streak reached out to us a few weeks ago, well, maybe a little more than a month. And they were asking to expand their last year's schedule. They're interested in adding summer weekend Saturdays and also do three day weekends through the fall. We're a little hesitant to expand it so much so quickly or at all, but we are very much in need of the revenue. So I thought that we could consider as a board adding August Saturdays, not June, not July, but only August. And ask them to make that proposal. They also asked for this first Saturday of September, the second, which I'm not sure what the status of community is, but if that's on Saturday, we might say no. If it happens at the same time, we may not want a boat coming in on Community Day. So that's something to look at. And then for fall, it would start the weekend of September fifteenth. They're looking to come in one time a day, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. And again, ask them to find somewhere else to dock. And if they need to dock, limiting it to one day a weekend. Because that was a big concern of waterfront residents. Additionally, we're keeping the same standard as last year of keeping it four hundred passengers and not allowing more than that. We've found in the past, the villages, you know, tested different numbers up to eight hundred, and we found that was far too many. And this is one thing that we can control. So we've limited it to four hundred. So that's the proposal on the table today. Would love to know what the board members think about it.
Well, we have not yet had conversations about Community Day, but that is, that is the likely weekend. So I would take that off the table. So we have that option as a community.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Laura, do you?
Ah, yes, I do.
I'll jump in. My one comment is, I don't remember how many total votes last year. But if we do add those weekend in the, in August, with the exception, I guess, of the twentieth, that's like twenty nine basically stops in the village between August fifth and November twelfth, which is seems like a lot. Does, do we have a number of what happened last year?
Not offhand. I can definitely get that.
Curious. I just don't personally remember off the top of my head, but I feel like, you know, twenty nine or thirty, or whatever it is, is it's a lot.
Yeah, I don't think that we had as many three day weekends where they're doing more Fridays in this proposal. And a lot of the dates that they proposed last year were dropped because of weather or low attendance. And so we lost a lot of revenue that way, which was really concerning. So this year, we are changing our requirements. Last year, it was, they were allowed to cancel and be refunded. This year, if they cancel, then it's only, we'll keep fifty percent for as the deposit or preserving the space and the time.
That's a, that's a proposal from you, Eliza.
Yeah, that's what I would propose. And again, the board has to discuss and decide if that's the right way, or if you guys would prefer a different approach. But I think that will at least reserve the income a little bit better. And also, you know, if they're, they're booking it, they should either go through with it or not book it.
But I think that proposal sounds really smart of having a committed lead, they can pull. And I was trying to look up what projected revenue we have in the budget for MC Street. So I would be interested to see that amount against this proposal and recognizing that there could be some cancellations. But I think you know, I would be interested to be in the ballpark of what we had already projected. And I just don't have a sense of what that is. Just looking at the dates, if it's possible to have these dates translated into an estimated cost for the different sections, and then then we can look at it compared to what we had planned for and what we had maybe brought in last year, that would give us good comparison.
Okay, I can pull that for next week.
So helpful.
The other thing that I would like to match this against is the 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 weekend proposals or the event week proposals from West Point. They, they were, they attempted for graduation week weekend and logistics problems on their end didn't allow them to see that through. They would like to attempt again for for big weekends when when the cadets arrive and when they, sorry that I don't remember the ver. sorry that I don't remember the verb, but when they make it through the torture that it is the first weeks, there's another event where families are invited back. Those are smaller boats, fewer people, but similar revenue stream. And if I would be inclined, if West Point is committed to doing that and is has the capacity to do it, that we look at those lesser impact boats and and to get a sense of get a sense of of revenue comparison. If we can get more bang for our buck with fewer bodies on the street, I think that's a good thing. I mean, it's only it would it's not, it's not a big chunk of their schedule, but it's it's a few of the days. I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, I can look into that. I would be hesitant to bench West Point's revenue against C-streak's revenue because C-streak's is a set amount, whereas West West Point may only sell twenty tickets and we get five dollars ahead. So we don't really know because we haven't tested it, so.
They were also willing, they were open to structuring it as a minimum, as a minimum amount. So I think our the negotiation with them is not done to get more comparable revenues.
Got it. Well, and I think that if we're looking at this as like what we have in our budget, this is probably, whatever proposal is probably much more than what's what we budgeted for, what we're expecting. So then maybe we can cut out some of these dates and and slim it down a little bit for the comfort level.
We budgeted twenty-eight thousand dollars revenue.
Okay, so looking at this, continuing this conversation with numbers against it would be good. I I would like us to reduce, you know, to hold to to hold the impact of the boats down as much as possible, reduce impact wherever we can. You know, we budgeted for, we we need the amount we budgeted for, but we don't, you know, we want to balance, we want to balance revenue against cost and impact.
Yeah, I think we could also hold them to, if the board is in support, hold them to, you know, only docking again one day a week.
For sure.
If if they can't get a docking point over at West Point, they just won't come. And if we kind of make that a hard rule and make sure that they've confirmed with West Point that they can dock over there, that may also cut out a bunch of these dates.
Good. We're not new, I'm sorry, Laura.
And, you know, we welcome public comment on this subject as well. I'm sure, well, yeah, thanks for interested numbers.
And and actually, if the board is willing, when we get through board business, I'd I'd like to, I know there's some folks who are here not to be part of the zoning conversation who might want to make comment on the board business we took up tonight, so to have a quick a quick public comment session before we roll into the continuation of the public hearing. Is the board okay with that after we get through top business topics? Okay. Okay, have we discussed what you wanted to cover tonight, Eliza?
I think so, yeah, I've got a sense of where we're going and I'll I'll pull the numbers for next week and then we can revisit it.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll table for continued discussion. We have tabled parking waivers, next is acknowledgement of receipt for notice of a liquor license, renewal application at fifteen Main Street, that's Crow Nest. Down at fifteen Main, there's nothing for the village to do to take action. It's just public notice that that establishment has requested the renewal of its license. And that is within the documentation for this meeting tonight on the village website. Okay, so Jeff, explain to us, June, there's, we need to talk about Juneteenth. We approved it last year as an additional holiday. Thought that we had done that fully, but it seems as if there's a catch with the employee handbook and so we need to revisit it again. Can you talk us through the situation?
When it was approved last year, it was just for twenty-twenty-two. It was not approved on an ongoing basis. It was done with the condition that it would be updated in the employee handbook, which would memorialize it and make it an ongoing.
Got it.
Recognize holiday as the others, and that is still has not been completed. So if we want to observe it this year, we need to go through this again. And then the way to avoid it for next year is to update and have the board vote on.
Right, right. And we're working on a few things. But someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recognize Juneteenth as a village observed holiday for our employees and staff.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Jeff, for keeping us on track. Next is also an Eliza-led conversation related to subway painting. So Bugsy, I think Bugsy is still with us on the call. His team has power washed and scraped. They're beginning to, they've done some patching in the tunnel. They are getting, they are readying to prime so that the tunnel can be painted. Eliza has been in conversation with an up-and-coming village, a village resident who is an up-and-coming mural artist and she has a proposal for the trustees this evening. Go ahead, Eliza.
Thank you. So we reached out to Mary Mechalak.
Mechalakis.
Thank you. I knew I was going to botch that. Because I'd actually gotten your contact through the Arts Alive team. I had reached out to Howden first, looking for, you know, different groups to help with painting the subway tunnel and and making it beautiful again. The current or the the last mural has been very much vandalized and and was sort of falling apart, so it was time to replace it. And I was given Mary's name because she is a Howden graduate whose goal is to be a mural artist. So we have somebody living here in the village who is actually working on her career as a mural artist. And I thought it was a great opportunity for the village to support one of our own. So and also for her to volunteer and put something beautiful in our town. So we asked her to give us some design options. She's given us three, if anybody in the public, unfortunately, we're having technical difficulties today.
I'm trying to pull up the email so I can share screen, just.
I don't know if helpful, I brought.
No, I think maybe Kathleen can get it on our screen, which will be a share.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember what the.
And the board has predicted, I think Kathleen's the only one probably without a copy.
Right. So start the conversation and I will pull it, try to pull it up. I need to find the email that it came in.
So so there's three designs. And if anybody needs to see them in the audience, it's on the table here. The first one is sort of a mountain view. The second one, more an abstract sort of patterns. And then the third one is sort of a nominal tree scene. We kind of priced out paints and we expect the village will be spending somewhere around five hundred, four hundred dollars, five hundred dollars for paint and probably a hundred for brushes. There's also a sort of finishing that you can paint on top of murals. So it's it's an anti-graffiti coating that's clear. There's different options, but the best one that I found, the most recommended was one that basically power washes off. So you paint two layers of this clear coating on a mural. If someone sprays it with graffiti or markers over it, you basically power wash that layer of the coating off.
Eliza? Jeff, if you allow me to share screen, I've got it.
And that's something that the highway department do.
Highway department could do that work and they can get it from Home Depot, so it's easy for us to procure. These are the three design proposals and and maybe Mary, you can talk us through those.
Oh, hi, Mary, I didn't know you were on.
Can you please introduce yourself? Yeah, so hi, for anyone who doesn't know, my name's Mary and I currently reside on Main Street. Hello. And yeah, I went to Howden, grew up in Cold Spring, I've been here for about twenty years now. And yeah, I've, anyone who's known me, I've always been by hobby and artist, but for the past few years now, I've been, I, it happened, I've I've been professionally painting murals for different businesses and just personal pieces in homes. And it's really starting to grow, so I was, and I was reached out with this opportunity, I was like, oh, for Cold Spring, yeah. So, yeah, so I, with guidelines provided me by the board, I came up with three different designs and I'll just quickly run through them. Number three, I I figured something representing fall would be a great idea to start with, just because back when we initially started this process, I posted on my social media just asking the question, what do you think of when you hear the Hudson Valley, what comes to mind? And the amount of people, a lot of people suggested different things, but the amount of people that said fall, which I personally agree with, just because the fall's so beautiful here, I mean, kind of early fall, but just with all the colors. And at the end of the day, I would want something that locals primarily and visitors would just, something nice to look at once you go down there, since it can be a little dark and scary sometimes. But yes, that was my initial idea for the fall. And then speaking also, as someone who's worked in the service industry, I would argue that the fall is one of the busiest times for people that visit. So I think it's safe to say that people who don't even live here recognize the beauty of the fall in Cold Spring and the Hudson Valley. And then it kind of ties into also, I'm going to go to number one next. I originally played with different ideas in front of the mountains, but after going back and forth with Eliza, we figured just the mountainous terrain itself would be great. And for sake of time, I wanted to send in this proposal so we can get the ball rolling. But I would want to, I feel like it looks a little plain, I would want to add more colors or just more details, just so, you know, it's one thing to look at these all in one, but when you're in the tunnel, it's so small, you really only see a section at a time. So I figured if I did add more colors, which I've found some of these photos I kind of use as a guideline as sort of an idea, not not super funky, but just you're not your average red, brown, yellow, something, you know, fun again. Just want something that would be pretty for people to look at. And then, two, I know the board expressed it being a good idea if we had something that just wasn't, you know, was more abstract, just not necessarily representing of anything, which at first I just didn't want to throw random things together, but then I had fun with it and I realized it could be just colors and patterns and, you know, people can look at it and see it how they want to see it, you know, and it could represent anything to them. And, you know, as I mentioned before, at the end of the day, I just would want something that, again, primarily, you know, our town as a whole and anyone visiting, it's just nice to look at and go down there and just feel, you know, the commuters going every morning, people just taking a walk to the river, people just visiting in town, just, they can enjoy it. And I'm glad to be here and presented because obviously I want everyone to be on board with, you know, whatever we pick. And I'd love to hear any questions, comments, concerns. You know, again, at the end of the day, I'd want to do something that people feel comfortable with and they would essentially just like to look at whenever they go down there, so, yeah.
And just to clarify, I I worked with Mary on this, but the other board members have just, this is the first time we've, they've seen it or had anything to do with really the the direction. But we just asked Mary to come up with three great designs, so we could pick one that we thought that the the community would enjoy.
Sorry, there's one more note I forgot to mention. I, for anyone who's not already aware, I do plan to paint both sides and the ceiling. This was more, I feel like, just kind of which direction is everyone in agreement with and where they would go. I can't say exact color and exact placement, that's exactly what you'll see because it just kind of depends again on what colors might be available and if people want to see some changes, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to make overview of that for full transparency. Yes, because once we do pick a theme that I can really dive into, like, okay, yada, yada.
How long do you think it'll take to paint both sides and any ceiling work that you do?
I told myself, no matter what, get it done in a week, even if you just power through the days. I've been there, I'm used to it just to meet deadlines, so I'm prepared. And I would, I know that we spoke about a possibility being June twenty-six and assuming people would agree, I feel like it would be really nice to have by July fourth, since it's going to be such on foot traffic in town, and I thought that would be really nice to have done by then. So that's at least for my brain is that, if that's able to do with just the preparation.
Great. So a couple points to to think about. There's been, you know, the the tunnels looked pretty terrible for a long time. And we've, you know, it, Mary and I have been talking about this for almost a year now, if not more. And like trying to get the patching done and all all these pieces take a long time. But I have had quite a few members of the public approach me and say that they're interested in volunteering to help, you know, get the mural done. So I think that, you know, I've heard members say that they're interested in being, you know, starting a committee that will manage, you know, updates the mural design over time because they'll probably change every few years. And, you know, the power wash solution may hold up for a few years, but we'll probably have to refresh the mural regularly. So if we could get members of the public and residents interested in public art to participate in the selection process and for, you know, people to put an idea of contest and things like that, I think that would be a great way to go forward. This is not the the board, I mean, it's fun to do, but it's not really our our job. We should be working on, you know, village business and so why it took so much longer, actually, I think that a committee would be more efficient at getting this done. So we hope in the future it will go in that way.
So Eliza, if I understand what you're putting forward as a as a proposal is to work with Mary for an initial design that cleans up the subway now and, you know, just improves improves for our day-to-day life in the village in the short term. And then going forward as the as the mural needs to be updated or the community wishes the mural to be updated, working with a sort of a committee, a community advisory board, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that's that's the way I would like to see it go forward so that we don't get to this point again where we have a tunnel mural that has slowly degraded and it's like too late. It'd be great to have this sort of in plan.
On ongoing maintenance, yeah. Could we turn the camera back so I could see, thank you, Mary, very much, so I could see the trustees?
Beautiful designs, Mary, thank you.
Let's let's have some conversation. Jeff, are you are you there to turn the camera? Oh, screen save, screen share, well, I think we want to keep sharing that screen now. Okay. So thoughts from, thoughts from from Laura?
Hard to take notes.
Stage direct, stage direct, yeah, sorry. Laura, tweets, thoughts?
Well, thank you. This is, these designs are beautiful and really thoughtful and I love the fact that you are a villager and proposing this, you know, you understand this place. I also, they say the tunnel is horrendous and eyesore and embarrassing. And this needs to happen ASAP and I love the the concept of it being done for July fourth, I think it's right on point. And thirdly, I really do agree with the idea that this is not, we should not be designing as a board, this should be a community process. And so for future design, I think having a a community-led effort is a great idea. I think that's where where it belongs. I think we have a very significant maintenance issue that needs to be addressed right away. So I would definitely support moving ahead right away with one of these designs. And this is exciting, I mean, you know, anyone who walks in that tunnel, like, that that cannot be, that's not what we want to be known for, so truly some of the language is not that, not that, not that creative. So that's my my two cents on that.
Laura?
I agree with what you said. I also really like the idea that it would be the ceiling of both sides, I think that will help brighten up space and maybe get a lot more pleasant. They're all beautiful, I don't, do you need the board to select or one now or, you know, what?
Um, or one now, or, you know, what's the, or decision before us?
I ha- I have some strong feelings about this, um, just given that, I love all of them, um, but given, given the way gra- the graffiti has come so quickly, I think that the abstract pattern, um, will be, um, it will, graffiti will be more masked on an ab- a, a, a bold and colorful, um, and lively abstract pattern, um. It's, we're not going to get to clean it every day, right? This, it's a process to wash off the, the coating, um, and reapply. And so I think that we need to aim for a design that did both discourages, you know, it has, has fewer, uh, palettes available for graffiti, fewer visual palettes. Um, and also, it will be more masking. So, um, for me, number two is a clear choice.
I, I would agree with that as well. I think that, um, it'll be hard to see graffiti in that design, whereas the other ones, it'll just pop off, because graffiti does not belong in the forest. So, um, I would agree with that.
I mean, and I'm a fully aware that in having this conversation tonight and in making decision, decisions, some people aren't going to be happy. That's how, that's how this will be, but something needs to happen with the tunnel, um, to make it a, a more pleasant and more joyful and frankly, what feels like a safer place to be. So we're not all going to agree that number, number two or whatever is chosen tonight is the best design, but we're, we're, I think, trying to optimize for, um, the variety of factors that we need to take into consideration in that public space. Do others have thoughts on? To think Eliza and I are pretty clear.
I were going based on like prettiness, that would be my, but I can imagine on the top, you know, guy. Um, I, I support number two, and I think they'll go in the, you know, kind of the rollout explaining that they, uh, um, would be new exhibit and that. And also, but then again, and maybe also, and also I believe in our great work, um, and that you're a local.
I wasn't able to hear all of that, but I think I got the gist.
I, I agree with number two. Uh, and, uh, I recognize that it will change. Uh, that there'll be a future here also.
Okay. Tweets?
Well, um, I agree with two. I, my part is with one, but you made a good point. If you did it sound fun, of course, that would be setting to see. So, um, I think two is quite good.
Okay, clerk, do we need to take a vote?
It's hard.
I didn't.
Yes.
Ari, I don't know what's going on with, um, you got, you all are breaking up. I don't know if it's my end or your end. So, um, I would make a motion, um, to accept proposal number two, um, and give Mary the permission she needs to, to get us rolling toward joy in the tunnel again.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Okay, so as promised, and I know that, that Ted and the village attorney are patiently waiting for us, um, as is the public in the room.
Just stop this shit, uh, screen sharing.
Yep.
So Kelly, did we also, did we say that we were going to take public comment?
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting to now, saying, thanking, thanking our, the professionals on the call with us for being patient while we take a brief moment for, would anyone like to make comment on any of the business items that we addressed tonight? Um, could, Gaston, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Hi, it's Gaston Alonso, uh, thirty-four West. Um, I just wanted to start by wishing you all a happy Pride Month, especially to the village staff and to thank them for all the work that the mayor rightly made reference to. And two, to say I'm really excited about the mural and Mary's really nice designs. Uh, I just have three quick sort of comments, questions about the C Street. Um, one, you've told us that you've cut down the number of people, well, you've cut down the number of people coming on the boats, as well as getting them to dock elsewhere as much as possible, and that's a really nice thing. So thank you for that. But what now it's being considered seems is to spread out the negative impacts of the boats have on our quality of life over more weeks and more days. And that's a lot, as Russery Wood said. And so I really want to encourage you to reconsider that in light of how it will specifically affect your constituents. And as a side note, I think that the West Point boats would be a much better deal. Since one, it helps us support the military, our neighbors, it helps us with parking as those people would otherwise come by car. And like the mayor said, it's a better event for the bucks. So I want to sort of encourage you to take the West Point uh, plan, uh, really seriously. I think it'll be a good thing for the village. Uh, the second thing is that when the village elected two PhDs to the board, uh, as a fellow PhD person, I say that, I hope that we might begin to make decisions based on expertise and on data. And it's nice to see that some of that has happened. Uh, on the boat specifically, past decisions have been made mostly on anecdotes from business owners. As, right, and that was the case last year. So I asked, so I just want to ask where the economic and quality of life reports um, are, the reports that would help us understand the actual impact of boats on things such as local wages, labor markets, noise pollution, pedestrian traffic, municipal costs and so on. And if those studies don't exist, will you pledge to build that into this process? And then the third and final point is that given that last year, the decision was made based on anecdotes from local business owners, that the boats would benefit them. I find it concerning that that there are two board members who own businesses on Main Street. And according to that logic, they would stand to profit from the boats. Um, right? And if they, and so I suggest that may perhaps they want to consider recusing themselves from both the negotiations and the boat on the deal in order to inspire greater public confidence on the outcome. And so that's, that's it for now. Um, and great news on the, on, on the tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you, Gaston. Um, and I will, um, address the concern that you raised about conflict, potential conflict or perception of conflict um, with the village attorney. Thank you very much for that. Anyone else? Uh, I can't see if there's anyone in the room raising hands.
One person in the room.
Say that again?
Yes, there's one person in the room. One moment.
Okay, would you, can you call that person? I can't see.
Aaron Freemark, come on down.
Hi. Uh, Aaron Freemark, um, uh, ten White Hill Place, uh, also, uh, interesting point about the C Street. I just, I don't know a lot about the history, but I know that in the past, at times, the village has raised the docking fees and um, I assume C Street is a for-profit company and they want to bring a lot of people here because they're making lots of money off of it. So there's always two ways to, um, to respond to that sort of thing. If the, the, the demand is really high and the supply is, is small, usually prices go up. So raising prices is another way of controlling traffic as opposed to just saying no. Um, it's not always the right answer, but as, as an option, it seems to me that, um, that that is something that could be a response. I don't know what kind of agreements that we have, you know, with C Street, but I, I, it sounds to me like there wasn't a predetermined fee and we promised we'd stick to it, so. Uh, so that's always a possibility, you know, uh, keep the commitments that we've already made, and if they want to change the deal and make a lot more, uh, raise more money, that might be a significant amount of money, maybe enough to get some help with some of the people, the traffic management, somebody standing by with plungers when they clog the toilets. So, um, just as an option, thanks.
Thank you. Jane?
I'm Jane Silvercham, I live on Rock Street, but I have a business on Main Street. I want to thank the village for the enhanced one-way sign upon Stone Street and the better no, uh, U-turn sign to clear sign. But tonight on my way here, I'm sure as a village resident was speeding the wrong way on Stone Street, almost hit a woman. And I just, I, I don't, I'm only saying this for the record, because I can't figure out how to, I was doing like this to him as he came to the corner, he didn't care. It's, it's so, it's so awful that people go the wrong way on my streets, just for the record. Sorry.
Agreed.
Yeah. Um, I believe one of our, one of our, um, police officers is nearby, so please have a conversation with him on your way out. Um, I will say that there has been, I, I'm sorry that I don't remember if I forwarded it, um, I'll have to check email. There has been a, um, a proposal put forward by one of the Stone Street residents for, um, clearer marking at the top of cross um, on an existing, on an existing pole for the one-way status of that street. So Jane, you're not the only one noticing the issue. Thank you very much. Okay, so we now have a, we have a lot to move on to. It's been a long night already, um. Uh, we'll move into the public hearing, the continued public hearing on chapter seventy-six noise, one oh four signs and placards and one thirty-four zoning. Um, so an update on where we are since we last had this conversation last Wednesday. Um, so all comments and questions received from the public to date have been addressed in writing and posted to the Village West website. The last set went up this afternoon. Um, hi Ted, we have with us tonight Ted Fink, our consulting planner, and John First, the village attorney.
Hello.
Hi. So, uh, they are available to peruse. We won't be discussing the last set tonight because they just went up today. Um, but we'll continue the public hearing into next week. Um, we can refer to the earlier published, um, questions as we need to. Uh, Ted has updated one thirty-four with clarifications and refinements on the original text. He's going to talk us through that tonight. I would encourage you, if you are in the room, to locate yourself where you can see the screen. He's going to go through the text and it's helpful to have the visual. Um, we drafted a response to planning board comments, sent them to village attorney for review. He has some, some thoughts on how to um, improve and enhance that document. So we'll have that conversation tonight. And this afternoon, we received an email acknowledgement, um, of the six, seven revisions from the county planner, Barbara Barosa, um, who said, "Good afternoon, Mayor Foley. The two thirty-nine approval was mailed to you earlier this week. You should receive it either today or tomorrow. I have no issues or concerns with the chapter as revised." So that's good news. Um, so tonight, as I said, Ted and the attorney will walk us through new text. Um, the trustees will have discussion on previous sets of recommendations. Um, depending on time, because it is already eight o'clock, depending on time, we'll, we could potentially review, um, one oh four and seventy-six and then take public comment. I have a feeling that it is very ambitious to think about one oh four and seventy-six tonight, um, given what we have in front of us. So Ted, um, talk us through what's new.
Okay, um, so first of all, let's see. Let me see if I can, oh, good, I can share the screen. Thank you, Jennifer, for that. So let me get a, a copy of the, um, the, the latest version that has just a, a handful of changes from the last version that the board saw. Um, this is chapter one thirty-four. Um, and I've highlighted eleven different, um, changes to this document, most of which involved um, some clarifications of terms. Um, there was also one global search and replace that I did. Um, the word lots, um, was, did not have capitals. Um, um, and one of the conventions that we tried to do as we went through the, um, the revisions to chapter one thirty-four was to capitalize any of the terms that are defined in the, um, uh, article two section of definitions within this. So lot was an obvious one. Um, there were several hundred of these that, that were found throughout the code, um, chapter one thirty-four. So I made that change. Um, but that simply replaces, uh, all lowercase L O T with a capital L O T. Um, other than that, let's see, I'll run you through each of the, um, the changes that have been discussed and are proposed as changes here. There's only one change to the page numbers in, uh, the document. And as, um, we did last week, when I walked you through, um, all of the changes, they're shown by a bar in the left column, an orange bar that shows that there is a, um, a change in this particular line. So in this case, it was, it was page fifty-one, I think it was, that changed to page fifty-two. And what you're going to see is, um, there's no changes, um, uh, until you get here. And you can see here, lot is capitalized now. Structure is also capitalized, building is capitalized. Um, and I'm not going to, um, go slowly and, and, um, scroll through this. It, it's tough on the eyes when you have to watch a lot of scrolling and we've got more than a hundred pages here, a hundred and twenty-some pages. So what I'd like to do, um, with your permission is, uh, just go past all of the changes, the global changes to lot and go straight to the, um, to the substance of the changes um, that began on page one thirty-four dash thirty. And that is right here. So one of the things which I, um, I had noted in the meeting last week is that, um, there was a mistake that was made in the definition of density. Uh, we had two different definitions, gross density and net des- density. Um, that was removed and it referred in only one place to the density that would be permitted by the, um, planned unit development for the, uh, planned mixed-use zoning district. And so essentially, um, what was added to this was a, um, uh, a very similar sort of provision, which is really, um, on, uh, you know, later thought, a better place to put the actual, um, regulation on how the density is calculated based upon the number of units per net acres. Uh, and it was previously referred to as net density. Um, by subtracting lands that are reserved for the civic uses, uh, that would be your thirty percent open space, streets, stormwater, um, non-buildable areas like wetlands, uh, wetland-adjacent areas, uh, and so forth. So, um, in general, it's better to have this sort of a regulatory, um, provision in the regulations themselves, rather than burying it in a definition in any case. Um, people are looking at the provisions in the zoning for the regulations and typically are not going to be looking for, um, a regulatory control within the zoning definition. So, um, this is a, uh, new language that was added to, uh, the provision in the PUD that the number of, maximum number of dwelling units shall not exceed seven per net acre, an average of seven per net acre. Okay, so that's the first one. Uh, let's see, the next one is two pages later. Thirty-two, this was, um, just to coincide with this previous reference to density, um, that the density is an average of seven, um, dwelling per net acre. This also refers to that. Um, and it has to do with the non-residential uses, but it refers to an average of seven dwellings per net acre in this section as well. The next one was some language that was added in response to some of the, um, comments that had come in uh, that were concerned with the, um, site contamination from the Marathon Battery Plant. And so, um, in the phasing, there is a new reference now to, uh, the project phasing must include a written plan, describes how development and phasing will fully comply with all requirements for new construction set forth by the EPA in its most recent, um, five-year review report on the Superfund site and any additional directives imposed by the state Superfund program. Uh, because this, uh, program is not only, uh, uh, or the EPA, uh, not only had, uh, the Marathon site and as a Superfund site, but also New York State as a state Superfund program as well. The next one, um, also in the PMU dis- The next one, um, also in the PMU District is right here. Um, this is the standards for the special, um, use permit approval. These are, there are nineteen separate standards that would govern the planning board in reviewing and approving the concept plan, special use permit for the site. Um, and what this does is it simply clarifies that the concept plan that is approved will include the minimum mitigation measures such as reduced density identified by the transportation studies to avoid or reduce any projected adverse impacts of the development. And, um, it's a restatement of what's already in other parts of the zoning, but it simply, um, memorializes this within the standards that the planning board would use for the approval of the project to ensure that whatever mitigation measures that are identified in the seeker review of the concept plan, special use permit are also included within the, uh, conditions on the approval of the special use permit. The next one is on the next page, I believe. Let's see. Maybe it's, okay, here it is. So this is another one of the special use permit conditions. Um, and this makes a reference, um, that the PMU District, uh, will be served by adequate public facilities and services, including streets and so forth. Uh, and it makes a reference to, um, what is required by other sections of the special use permit, um, uh, submission requirements, and that includes a fiscal impact analysis and engineering studies, uh, and that the documentation, uh, becomes a part of the special use permit approval process. Okay. Um, then there is nothing else until we get to page ninety-seven. So all, if you, if you see little glances of, of this, um, this actually was just a, a space that was included here. Uh, the convention, what we had here was, uh, double spacing between the, um, the subsections. Uh, but you will see other references to lots through peppered throughout the, um, the entire zoning. So let me get to ninety-seven. Okay, almost there. Okay, um, this was something that the working group had recommended, uh, that as, um, this is the section on home occupations, one thirty-four dash seventeen J. Uh, the recommendation that they wanted to, um, uh, put forward to the, um, Board of Trustees is that there would be only one, oh, home occupation permitted in the principal dwelling and one permitted in an accessory apartment if there was an accessory apartment, um, uh, accessory to a, uh, one family dwelling. Uh, so that makes clear that, uh, you couldn't, if you had an accessory apartment, you could have up to two home occupations on a property. And there are other, many other conditions that also are controlling, uh, to ensure that home occupations are consistent with the care, such as this, the residential care of the neighborhood, while not generate noise, vibration and so forth. So there's, there's a number of other protections that are built into the home occupation section, but that's an added one. Um, there was another, um, section here where there was one word added, um, in the non-conforming uses, non-conforming buildings and lots section. Uh, and this pertains to non-conforming uses, except as herein provided, any lawful pre-existing non-conforming use may be continued. So that was a term that was added to clarify, um, that if it was a lawful pre-existing non-conforming use, that it may be continued. This was a, um, a section also of the non-conforming uses. And this had to do with, um, uh, a, a section that allowed for an enlargement, um, but it was only allowed as a result of changes that would reduce or eliminate the non-conformity. Um, and in fact, there was a, um, uh, there was a comment that came in, um, from a landowner within the village and, uh, they actually had a, um, a situation where it appeared as if that would be a overly restrictive provision to have in here. And so the working group, um, worked through rewording this, um. So unless otherwise allowed by a special use permit from the planning board, uh, no non-conforming use shall be enlarged or extended, no building or other structure, housing or serving a non-conforming use shall be enlarged, extended or structurally altered, except to enable a permitted use or to perform an alteration, a repair or a nest maintenance necessary to keep said building or other structure in a safe condition. Okay.
So Ted, that specially, but by, by requiring a special use permit, there is sort of a, a, a safety valve for.
That's correct, because any special use permit that is issued by the planning board has a whole series of general conditions that, um, the application will have to comply with in order to ensure, um, that the, the use is suitable for the site, will not have an effect, a deleterious effect on the neighborhood. Uh, uh, you know, a negative effect on the property, um, will not cause a whole variety of, of potential impacts. So it is a safety valve, um, for that sort of a situation.
And it allows the, through that public process of a special use permit, it allows for the review of a non-conforming use and determination of its continuation and whether uh, that continuation would have an adverse impact on the neighborhood and community.
That's correct.
So it is an outcome. Sorry.
Yep, no, go ahead.
You could, as an outcome, you know, depending on the circumstances of the particular application, you could see the planning board approving the enlargement of a non-conforming um, use or the rejection of.
Yes.
So is that the discretion of the, the planning board and under the rigor of the special use permit process?
That's correct. And along with the special use permit, um, anything that, um, is subject to a special use permit from the planning board also requires a sequel seeker environmental impact assessment. And it also requires a public hearing. So it's a process that requires notification to neighbors. Um, it's a process that requires, um, um, that there be written, um, notice of the public hearing to anyone that, um, is within a spec- specified distance of the property that seeks the special use permit. Um, so there are a number of, of protective mechanisms that are built into, to that.
And I, and at the same time, you know, another route would be to seek a, a, a use variant, but, um, use variances have a extremely high bar to, unlike an area variant, much, much, much harder to get a, uh, use variant. So if you're looking at whether this should go before the planning board or the Z B A, at least a special use permit has like that rigor, but it's a, it's a, you know, it's kind of possible to receive versus, um, a use variance. That's just like extraordinarily difficult.
That's correct. And you know, the focus on especially is permit is to ensure that it doesn't create an adverse impact um, on the neighborhood, on the community, whereas a use, um, variance, the bar is in fact very high because there has to be presented with, um, economic, um, data that supports that, um, you know, there, I'm not even sure how it would work with the non-conforming use, but use variances have a very high standard and it's exceedingly rare for use variances to be granted in New York State, um, following a change to state law about fifteen or twenty years ago.
John First is looking like he wants to pipe in.
No, I mean, Ted's right. I mean, for a non-conforming use to seek a use variance is almost po- impossible because how are you going to show that you're going to have no economic value when you have an existing use, um, at the site? I would, um, just throwing it out there to the board and to the committee. Um, you may want to cap the percentage of the enlargement. I've seen other codes where they'll cap it at fifty percent. So, you know, they'll, they'll let, they'll, they'll let you enlarge via special use permit, but you can't go more than fifty percent more. Um, but this is, I've seen it like this as well, just throwing it out there.
Okay. That's a good comment, something to take up with the work group.
Mm-hmm.
To see if they come up with it.
I mean, and certainly here in this forum among the, among the trustees, I, I see real value in that. Um, and that is a, that's a modification that I, I think would be appropriate. I don't know if others have thoughts at this point, or you want to pull to the end?
I don't really have a strong position on that one, one way or the other. I, I can't think of a lot of properties where there's a whole lot of room to grow, but, um, but I think that capping things is always wise and prudent. So I guess I would support that.
It's important as long as it was written so that it didn't appear that that up to fifty percent is, is allowable, but it's still, you know, indicates that it's, the planning board can say anything from no to fifty. Um, which I think is what we're discussing, but just to make sure that.
Correct, yeah, the, 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 I've seen it where the planning board can only grant up to a fifty percent enlargement via special use permit. So even if it's a one percent enlargement, it still needs a special use permit.
That's, that's seems very smart. Ted is taking note, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Ted, Ted's mad because he's got to make another change.
Close, we're close.
A never-ending. Okay, well, we're very close to the end. There's only two more, um, and one is a change to the, um, to the table of uses. So let me get to that. That's eighteen. And the change is in the B one district. In a visitor center under civic and general uses, um, the working group had recommended adding, uh, a visitor center, um, permitted through a special use permit issued by the planning board, only in the B one district. Um, it already had been in the other civic and, and, um, you know, civic parks and recreation and educational religious cultural districts by special permit, um, but there was, um, a public comment on that and the working group felt that that was a, um, a worthwhile recommendation to, um, to offer to the Board of Trustees.
It's where our existing, our existing visitor center is in B one.
Yep.
Although mindful that what, where that was constructed is a continuation of um, the public right-of-way for the street. Um, there was a, there was a question about that from a member of the public, that parcel, it doesn't have a parcel number. It's not a distinct lot. It is simply a continuation of the right-of-way for the street and it, which belongs to the village. It, it, one of the recommendations from John First was that there, you know, there, there are a couple of larger village rights of way alongside streets that may be worth pursuing, um, parcel numbers for with the county, um, and, and then including them as part of, as part of zoning, but beyond the scope of where we are right now, that's a longer process.
All right, um, the next change is to the table of dimensional requirements. Um, there was a comment for the B two business district. Um, the original recommendation from the working group was to have a five-foot front setback. The recommendation was to go to a broader setback of ten feet. Uh, so this was, um, changed as a proposal to throw out there to the Board of Trustees, um, as their recommendation.
I think it's important to note to Ted that the, the street line and that portion of the village business, business two being along Chestnut Street, um, the street does not necessarily reflect the property line. So the setback may be deeper than people realize, looking at the zoning map or contemplating the number ten.
And it is a busy street too because of the state designation. Okay, um, and then the only other one, and I, um, unfortunately, because the map is, um, sideways, it is going to be a little bit disorienting. Um, but there was a change to the map. This is, um, um, dated today, as is the rest of the document. Um, I believe it was this parcel had been, um, proposed for the R O zoning district. Um, and in fact, as a result of public comment, we learned that the owner of this property, um, had a permit for a multifamily, um, um, uh, structure within that property. And so the work group had recommended that it be changed to the multifamily district, which is this pink color right here.
Well, it is a, it's a purpose-built multifamily structure. It's an old multifamily structure.
Yeah.
But this is, we're talking, what we're talking about there is the, the building with the very low porch near Hudson House that has the rocking chairs on it. Um, they get turned backwards. So people don't sit in them on busy weekends.
And I believe that was the only change, um, on the zoning map. I don't think there were any others.
There was a question regarding, um, streets. We had John First looked, look into, um, the inclusion of streets and zoning. John, you want to review what you found?
Um, so I mean, I, I, basically I just took a look at some other zoning maps for other municipalities. And, you know, first of all, the streets are, are, are owned by the village. So, um, some other zoning maps, mostly village maps, zone, other zoning maps have the streets uh, indicated as white and they don't really have it in a zone. Uh, I, I guess the zone would go to the center line if necessary, but I don't think you need to show that on the map. So I think the way you have it set up now is fine. Uh, there's no reason to zone the streets because it's all owned by the village. Um, and you can't really build anything on it anyway, uh, because it's being utilized as a street. I guess if the street were, if, if the village was ever to abandon a street, then that would be a different story. And you would address it at that point as part of the abandonment process. You would also try to figure out what it would be zoned. But, you know, any public street does, uh, I, I don't think has to be in a specific zone.
And definitionally, you, you made a point definitionally as well for interpretation.
Interpretation of.
That in the, in the interpretation section of the code, the center line of the street is defined.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, that's been my experience too. I, I don't think I've ever seen a, um, a community actually, um, have a zoning district applied on the streets. They generally just show up as white, um, with no zoning designation on them. That's, that's the way I've seen it for years.
And Ted, the modifications that you've made are now reflected in the E A F?
Yes, that's correct. The E A F has been updated to today, um, that should be up on the village's website. And so, um, what I've done is, that was last updated in May tenth. So, um, I have accumulated a number of different changes in that document that reflect the changes that have, um, come forth with the different, um, iterations of this document that have been developed as well as to respond to comments on the E, um, E A F to try and clarify points that people were interested in knowing more about. And so that has been done and that document is up for, um, for public review, um, but especially for the, um, board's review, because that's a document that, um, but before any action is taken on the, on the zoning, uh, seeker has to be fully complied with. And at this point, the document, um, that is up there is the part three environmental assessment form. It also acts as a negative declaration, uh, meaning that, um, adoption of the zoning will have no significant adverse environmental impacts and therefore can proceed without preparation of a draft environmental impact statement.
So Ted, the, the, um, updates that, that you have carried out most recently, um, incorporate recommendations through, the published recommendations through the eighth of June, the question set that was published in the eighth of June. Trust me, you were to, we received them last week, have a look at the recommendations, um, which Ted has reflected, but raise any concerns that you any concerns or comments that you had regarding the recommendations to the trustees from the working group? Are there any?
Are there any, any further concerns?
Or, or, but any concerns about any of the, any of the, um, revisions you've talked us through tonight?
Um, no. Um, no, I mean, there haven't been substantial changes made to it. It, it's simply been an update. Build out analysis, for instance, that focuses on the planned mixed use district, because that's the, the.
I meant. I'm sorry, I, I meant, did the trustees have any concerns or? Or comments on those recommendations? Um, if we can stop, I can't speak very well. We stop screen sharing so we can see each other's faces. I couldn't tell if you were signaling to speak or not. No, okay.
No, I think the recommendations are pretty subtle, but important and um. I agree with them. It seems pretty straightforward.
I think every iteration makes, uh, you know, refine the language and. In a helpful way that will make um, application better, so.
Okay. Um, it is now eight thirty. Seventy six and one oh four are. Very brief presentations and discussions. If folks are up for it, I'd like to knock them out, knock them out. Um, so we have that behind us, um. Let me just get to. Jeff, do you have um, website access yet? As I can, um, I can get into my desktop there and share from there. If needed.
Hey, what do you want?
Um, the red line, let's, let's, let's start with um, signs and placards, the red line on one oh four.
The one that stated four nineteen.
It's whatever is the highest on the, the website that I don't believe there any. Check for six, seven, six, seven. There may have been small. I can get into my desktop if that's easier. You got it? Yeah, six, four. That's, that's the most recent one. So whatever you need to do to adjust. Size for seeing, for being able to see, this is the, the um, modification of one oh four built upon. The proposal of. September twenty twenty one. When uh, more um, substantive revisions were made to, were proposed for. Chapter one oh four, and then when the zoning chapter was not passed. The acceptance of signs and placards was put on hold as well. So the, the primary, the primary modifications, this is.
Jeff, I think you need to switch the redlined version.
Yeah, this is, this is the uh. Clean text, not the red line. Thank you for being patient. There you go. Thank you. And the, the guide to this chapter explains also that this is a. An update of an update that was nearly passed and didn't because one thirty four was withdrawn. Um, so we'll see on the first page that the um. The references to. What we mean by the residential, which residential districts um, for signs and residential districts. Is indicated, same in other districts. We've added in the PMU, PR, the, the Parks and Rec Civic ERC. Um, and there was a question about lack of clarity in the PMU, because the PMU obviously has a mix of residential and. Potentially residential and um, commercial or office uses, and so. That particular reference, which is also drawn out in the texts, makes that more clear. Uh, definitions have been enhanced. Including the addition of animated rotating or otherwise moving signs. Um, banners, actually placard was not defined, it is now. Temporary definition was added for temporary signs. For, for clarity in the, in the code. And references are made. In one oh four, three regulations applicable to all signs in districts. To reflect those expanded definitions um, on page. Four, one oh four, four. See the addition of animated rotating or otherwise moving signs. Um, a, a revision of projecting signs. Um, it was proposed in September twenty twenty one, that that be two feet. It's been pulled back to one. And uh, we made clear that signs prohibited signs. Signs can't be hung lower than eight feet above the public right of way. Okay. Um, an important element is on page one oh four oh five, sections F and G. So. Prior to. Prior to um, this revision, there was an, a lack of due process in the code. Um, signs were allowed to be taken down either by the mayor, um, approved singularly by the mayor or taken down singularly by the mayor. Also taken down um, by any resident of the village. Um, this was a constitutional red flag for John, um, because there is not. There was not permitting or due process, so that has been added in related to signs on public property and signs on posts, utility poles, trees, fences. The um, the powered lies appropriately with the code enforcement officer um, and through a, through a process of review. Okay. Um, under permitted signs in business districts. Uh, more clarity in definitions regarding size and surfaces. What sandwich boards, what standard board signs are definitionally. Sign adjustments in. Sorry, size adjustments in um. The business districts as well. And then what I think is the most important um. Element of update on page one oh four oh eight related to temporary signs. So temporary signs have been. The bane of code enforcement's existence um, and uh, a problem in the village in terms of. Intersections, um, creating visual hazards at, at the, the ma, the major intersections, particularly, you know, three oh one and nine D. Um, a proliferation of signs of all types. Throughout the year that can um, both become. You know, unpleasant to look at, but also create a hazard for drivers trying to see around corners. So working with the code enforcement officer. We built in a section on temporary signs um, and, and where they can be placed. On private property, not public property, um, and they need to have um. They need to have a temporary sign permit. Um, they're restricted in size, can't be illuminated, et cetera. We didn't have any of these tools before. So, so this will prevent placement of non exempt signs. Um, meaning not, not political signs, not signs that are free speech, but. Business signs, advertising signs, et cetera, um, in the public rights of way. Um, and then in the exempt sign section under one oh four eight. The village attorney was very clear that we need to treat signs equally. Um, exempt and non exempt. In terms of where they can be placed. How and for how long? Um, so some clarity on that. Under exempt signs, including political signs. Taking cues from other codes in Putnam County, item D, political signs and signs containing personal expression, not exceeding a total of four signs per lot. And not exceeding a total of six square feet for a period not exceeding thirty days. Say that I, I couldn't hear.
No, there's nothing.
Okay. Um, so those are the highlights of changes. John, was there anything that you wanted to add about sort of how we've come closer to constitutionality on this? On this chapter?
Um, no, I, I think you covered everything. Um. You know, signage is difficult and really the emphasis is, you know. To not regulate the content, meaning, you know, political signs, religious signs, commercial signs. You know, they shouldn't really be. Different, you have different regulations or standards, because then you can be accused of, of regulating based upon content. So as long as you're consistent, which I, I think this is, um, then you should be good.
There was a, a question from a member of the public regarding why. Um, so schools, religious institutions, and I think not for profits formally were, could have one sign. Without review, without permit. Um, and that was another flag for you of treating, as you've said. Treating all signs equally. Um, and so now schools, religious institutions, not for profits, all have to go through the same sign. Review process that any other property would. Um, questions, comments from trustees? Do we feel like we're giving our code enforcement office tools in its kit? You're all small, so if you're, if you want to say something, please be dramatic in your signaling.
I guess I'm concerned about uh, sign enforcement and wonder if we're. Doing anything to. Clarify that process or improve that process. If, if we're saying, I mean. If the. Placards on the, the temporary placards are permitted now, they go through the, a board? How does that?
No, code enforcement officer.
Code enforcement officer.
As a sign, a, a sign comes in via building permit like any other sign does. Um, but they need to be reviewed, um, and they'll, uh, what, what Greg has proposed is a, a mark on the back of the. Of the sign that indicates the period it can be up. So that it's crystal clear when he's coming back through for checks, what signs are past their thirty days.
Oh, that's great.
So temp, temporary is, is not only definable in text, but is identifiable in the, in the field. That was his recommendation for making that job easier. And it's more achievable. So obviously there, there, you know. We need to work out, we need to work out systems with him, but this is the enabling legislation that allows us to do that. Seventy six, if we want to move on to red line of that, seventy six is noise. This chapter. It's really, it's very, it is very old language. And. Also, noise is really, really hard to enforce. Um, particularly related to the thing that bothers people most, which is loud mufflers, um. Vehicles passing, et cetera. Um, it's, it is very difficult without a, a live read in the moment. We did not make, this is again, taking the twenty, September twenty twenty one proposal. Um, running it by the village attorney, um, that hadn't happened prior, um, and making sure that we were. Um, compliant with laws as we should be. Not a lot of changes. We did try to clarify use of off-road motor vehicles. Do we have the red line? We're still looking for it? Here we go. So sort of reordering, reordering the chapter in a more logical way. Off-road vehicles and severability, off-road vehicles were sort of, was sort of appended to the end of the chapter, chapter and just. Stuck there in a revision. At some point, it didn't make sense in the flow of the chapter. So now that the regulations regarding off-road motor vehicles are in the flow of other regulations as they should be and not just tacked off, tacked at the bottom.
So it's the question about that?
Yep.
So if there are other chapters that refer to those lower numbered ones. I, I mean, I imagine that's why it got dumped at the end. Um, will that cause problems elsewhere?
It, it appears to have been dumped at the end as just. Sort of shortcut, appending process. It doesn't, it doesn't, I, we have not found seventy six. What, what, what was seventy six eighteen? Um, in other parts of the code. Certainly, if anyone knows of any in the room, there are folks who've lived with our village code for much longer than we have. If we have missed something, please don't be afraid to say so, but it doesn't appear to cause other problems.
Okay, so for twelve through eighteen previous, there's no references elsewhere.
It, I believe, I believe that we're good. Um, and but again, if someone, if someone knows differently or, you know, and has caught something that we haven't, this is the time. That's what the, that's what the public comment period is for. The big, um, the important elements here and the same reason that this. Chapter was put to the side once, when one thirty four was withdrawn, is making sure that the, if we could go down to seventeen oh five. The um. Zoning cross references are correct. Here. Oh, could you pause there for a second, Jeff? Actually, on that page seventeen oh four, this was a, an element that John, that the village attorney caught. Which is the, which is identifying sound as, as noise, as unreasonable noise, as opposed to just noise. Um, that that was a, a critical word that was missing in the chapter. Um, we didn't do a lot of wordsmithing on this because the primary focus was. One thirty four, this isn't, is it's, it's old code type language, whereas therefore. Um, at some point, this should, this is something, this is a chapter that someone could, should come back to, to make more user friendly, but what we have on the table here is what. Brings us into compliance lawfully and make sure that our, makes sure that our cross references with the zoning districts are correct. So that's there on page seventeen oh five. And also in terms of due process, on the last page seventeen ten, penalties for offenses and enforcement. Again, laying out a, a due process. Adding important words like upon conviction shall be subject to fine. And there was a very complex um. Section on penalties for offenses, um, and we replaced it with simplified language from another code, seventy six fourteen is the section I'm referring to. So that's, that's the summary on. Seventy six. John, do you have anything to add?
No.
Any, any questions or comments from board members?
No, it was like you got what was necessary.
It, it is not a work of art, but it does the, it does the job. That's the point. If there's no further discussion among board members, um, I'll shift to public comment. Are we ready for that?
Yep, so we'll get the timer started.
Okay. Okay, so, so we're gonna go over some, some ground rules. Comments this evening will be respectful and polite. They will relate to the zoning content under review or signs and placards and noise. Um, questions and comments that contribute to the public process and make for a better final product are welcome. There will be no ad hominem attacks, speculation, fear mongering rudeness or attacks. This is the warning. If you can't regulate yourself to participate in the process appropriately, you will be asked to leave. Three minutes, no extensions. If you can't say what you need to say in three minutes, you are welcome to um submit your questions in writing to the village clerk, VCS clerk at coldspringny.gov. So I can't see to call people, well, I guess I can now. I may need help with corners of the room. So are there any members of the public wishing to comment on topics from one thirty-four, seventy-six, or one oh four in three minutes?
Michael Reesley.
Thank you, Michael Reesman, thirty Rock Street, um, regarding one thirty-four twelve. Um, the village board and its consultants have stated numerous times that an independent traffic study will be performed prior to the development at Marathon. Um, but the six, seven, the June seventh version of the code requires only peer review, which is undefined and can sometimes be a cursory process that amounts to a rubber stamp. The code should require a de novo independent traffic study rather than just peer review of what the applicant has done. Next, um, the traffic study should provide a detailed explanation as to whether any proposed development at Marathon complies with policy seven point two point two of the comprehensive plan regarding access and traffic. Next, um, the village board has stated several times in answers to questions that form form-based illustrations will not be included in the proposed PMU. Uh, yet the June seventh version contains illustrations for the PMU. Uh, will the uh board resolve this inconsistency? Next, the board has repeatedly stated that any applications for development Marathon on, uh, will include re- robust public engagement, yet one thirty-four twelve D two G lacks specifics about public outreach that the planning board must um undertake. Uh, the outreach should include at a minimum and should be specified in the code to include at least two public meetings or hearings per each of the three steps. Publicizing meetings and potential actions through mailings, email blasts, newspaper advertisements and so on. And publishing on the village website materials regarding all such meetings. Uh, next, regarding public engagement as well, um the list of stakeholders should explicitly include residents of Rock Street, Campbell Avenue, Boulevard and Con- Constitution Drive, as these residents and taxpayers may be most directly impacted by development at Marathon. Um, next, uh, the village should provide the analysis of zoning conformity, non-conformity that has been discussed several times during this process and that ad hoc committee member Paul Henderson described and promised would be provided during the April twenty-sixth meeting. Next, please explain why one thirty-four C twelve C four, which explicitly incorporates by reference table six B allows a greater density for non-residential than for residential uses. Um, next, the June eighth spreadsheet answer uh to question one twenty-two states that the village board reached a consensus that density of Marathon should be consistent with rest of the village. Please explain how this is consistent with policy seven point two point two. My last point in my three minutes is that regarding that uh point about consistency, the um build-out analysis shows that the PMU would have higher density than RL and RO. That is inconsistent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I will email you a letter just now.
Um, I see that there's a, a, a head over in the corner, but I can't tell if there's a hand raised. Three minutes.
Super page three, or, on three, page one, there are forty-nine chapters in the village code, not forty-seven. One, one thirty-four sixteen D one B, a lot requirement is fifteen thousand square feet by the original unit, five thousand square feet for each additional unit created. Converting one family to a two-family would require a lot the size of twenty thousand square feet. Converting one family to multiple would require at least twenty-five thousand square feet. These less sizes for exceed the size for our own lot and many are N lots. In fact, they are larger than the minimum size for our L lots. My point is that conversions such as this should not be permitted on any R O lot, which I believe has a a much smaller square foot requirement. One thirty-four sixteen D two C one B I I, the maximum height is stated to be eighteen feet. Table of dimensional requirements shows it at thirteen feet, which is it? Definitions, the change of definition says, and a change from retail business such as a drugstore to a grocery store is a change of use. A grocery store is a retail store, so this example should be not removed or altered. Table of uses permitted by district, footnote ten and eleven. Housing in the B three di- district is not restricted by age, but by income, allowing persons with disabilities to live in it there. The footnote should be modified. Table of uses permitted by district, footnote ten, housing in the B three district has sixty-four units. Table of uses permitted by district, mixed use is currently a permitted use in B two. Why is it changed to special, special use permit? It seems that one thirty-four twelve D two A B twelve, two A three. It seems as if one sheet is insufficient to contain all the detail identified in this item. Is there a reason it's restricted to one sheet? One thirty-four twelve D A three F two V. This states that the planning board may reduce the required number of parking spaces. Should this be altered instead of reduced to allow for the possibility that one thirty-four dash seventeen M is found to be insufficient. One thirty, one thirty-four twelve DC four says, with automobile parking locations restricted by one thirty-four seventy-six A. One thirty-four seventy-six K is accessory buildings and structures and does not address parking at all. Is the reference incorrect? One thirty-four twelve D B four B says that the planning board needs to find that the price or rental rates of dwelling units meet the housing needs of the community. Should the price and rental rates be a required element provided by the applicant in a special use permit or in some other document? One thirty-four twelve D four B, if ownership of dwelling
It turns up very.
Should the additional cost be provided as outlined above?
Can you send the rest to us, please? Can you, do you have more? Can you email it to us, please?
I'm sorry.
Can you?
No.
Yes, of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Pugh, Rock Street, so I have two comments, one.
And it's Mr. Pugh.
Right, Art, for the RL, large residential, thanks for increasing to three stories, I think that's makes sense. I suggest you also increase accessory structure to two and a half stories. A, a one and a half story building, fifteen foot accessory building doesn't match what's currently a lot of the lots and frankly, I think it looks silly. In B two, which is by the big buildings, primarily on Main Street, most of those buildings cover well over fifty percent of the lot. The table has, has building to lot coverage of thirty-five percent. If those buildings were significantly renovated, reduced to thirty-five percent coverage, the character of the street would change dramatically. Perhaps it would make more sense to say the maximum building coverage is the current footprint for thirty-five percent of the lots. Now I'll save those two minutes for next.
Thank you.
Yeah, the backup.
I don't know, we make news every, every time we come.
No, it's, this is consistent with last week, Mr. Pugh. Um, is there anyone else in the room raising a hand?
We don't see anyone.
Hey, anyone in the, in the Zoom audience? Hey, I would like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to uh Wednesday, June twenty-first. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, um, motion to adjourn. Thank you, everyone. John and Ted, thank you for sitting through a very long session.
Good night.